Leading to the capital budget of the county of Kauai, Hawaii for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 by revising the amounts estimated in the general fund CIP, again for the Wailea Golf Course Kart Path. General Fund CIP $445,000. This bill proposes to appropriate $445,000 from the general fund CIP for improvements to the Wailea Golf Course Kart Path. We have no written testimony or anyone registered to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. With that, we will call the council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bolusan.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallio.
Here.
Councilmember Cowden.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Present.
Councilmember Tanshiro.
Present.
Councilmember Koalii.
Present.
Council Chair Poso.
Here.
All present.
We got a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
On page two, minutes of the following meeting of the council, the October 29th, 2025 council meeting.
Will it be approved?
Second.
Approved and seconded. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is an interview for the Board of Ethics Noel Lau for a partial term ending 12/31/26.
Okay, we did also suspend the rules. And also, Madam Kirk, Gerald Ida could not make it in today, so we'll be deferring the second interview for the Kauai Historic Preservation Review Committee. With that, Ellen.
Good morning. Ellen Shing, Boards of Commissions Administrator. I'm pleased to introduce Noel Lau. Noel was born on Oahu. Her dad was in the Army, and Noel spent seven years of her childhood moving between San Francisco, Kansas, and Washington. She started at Wailei Elementary and attended five schools before returning to Hawaii and entering New Valley Intermediate and Kaiser High School. Upon graduation, she continued her education at Brigham Young University in Utah and earned it, earned a bachelor's degree in journalism with a minor in poly science. She stayed at Brigham Young and pursued a law degree at the J. Rubin Clark Law School. In 2006, she returned to Hawaii and passed the bar. She put her license on inactive pro bono status while she became a stay-at-home mom. Noel's mom was born in Waimea, Kauai, and her maternal grandfather and great-grandmother were born in the Japanese camp in Lihui. Although her mom's family moved to Oahu in 1960, her parents moved back to Kauai in 2004. In 2017, Noel moved to Kauai. In 2018, Noel started working at Wilcox Hospital as the Coordinator for Community Benefits. She worked to form partnerships with local organizations to promote healthy initiatives related to youth programs, food security, and finances. In 2023, Noel accepted the position as of, as Development Officer for the Wilcox Health Foundation. In her current position, she writes and manages grants and Dota relations to fund the largest not-for-profit medical facility on Kauai. Currently, her efforts are devoted to three areas: the Imaging Revitalization Project to increase access to care by upgrading the only magnetic resonance imaging, or MRI, available on Kauai, as well as renovating and upgrading the X-ray and fluoroscopy equipment and facilities, emergency and trauma care, and the Malama Fund for patients facing financial hardship to provide medication, medical equipment, and transportation. In the past five years, over a thousand patients have been assisted. It would seem only natural that Noel would choose the Wilcox Medical Center as her professional home since her dad spent the last 20 years as an emergency room physician at Wilcox. In her free time, her first and foremost, she is first and foremost mom to three, two sons and a daughter. Her eldest son is attending school in San Diego to become a pilot. Her daughter will be starting school at BYU Hawaii in January, and her youngest, her son, is attending Kauai High School. She likes to read, surf when she can, take swak, take walks with her dog in between attending cross-country meets and soccer games. Noel's a foodie, but not a cook. Luckily, her youngest son has taken an interest in the culinary arts and helps to cook regularly at home. Her favorite dish is Grandma's Sweet and Sour Ribs. Her dream trip would be a family trip to Norway to visit the fjords of Norway. She visited Japan, the homeland of her maternal family, but her paternal grandfather was a Lutheran minister from Norway, so she would love to make that connection. Although Noel has a law degree, she's never worked at a law firm. She has instead assisted people on a pro bono basis with various legal issues they may have. The Board of Ethics is the vanguard upholding the Code of Ethics for the county of Kauai. The Board renders advisory opinions with respect to the application of the code and examines all financial disclosures for possible conflicts of interest. Recently, the Board received House Resolution Number 65 urging the Ethics Commission of each county to adopt standards similar to that applicable to state-elected officials and officers as adopted and enforced by the State Ethics Commission. As a result, the Board is reviewing the Code of Ethics and the rules of the Board of Ethics for any amendments or revisions. Noel's technical knowledge and expertise will greatly add to this endeavor, and I'm grateful that she's willing to contribute her time and ability to the Board of Ethics.
Thank you, Ellen, and thank you for agreeing to serve. I would agree that your expertise, I think, will be an asset. Is there anything else you would like to add?
No, just want to thank you all for the opportunity, and I reviewed what the requirements are and the responsibilities as well as the Code of Ethics prior to coming to this meeting, and feel confident that I can do it in a just very, um, just a, I'm a loss for words. I'm a little nervous. Excuse me, my heart is pounding, um, just in, in a way that will really benefit everyone involved and make sure that it's done in a fair and accurate way, so.
Well, good. Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Cowden?
Um, well, first of all, I want to say thank you, and I'm in alignment that having a person on the board with a, a legal background, whether you worked in it or not, it still sharpens your mind in that direction. Are you still actively doing pro bono work, or do you help with that?
I am. I actually am. So I leave my license on inactive pro bono with the purpose to be able to on occasion. I never represent anyone, obviously. Want to make sure that I comply with all ethics for the state bar of Hawaii, but there are opportunities when I've been able to.
And have you, have you been to an ethics, a Board of Ethics meeting yet?
I have not.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, what made you to decide to do this? Were you, um, voluntold, or did you, um, decide on your?
I was voluntold.
You were voluntold?
I was, yeah, I was notified that the mayor had nominated me, and so I, I took the opportunity to review what that entailed and decided if, of course, also speaking with, um, making sure that it was cleared through my professional responsibilities, that I could give and dedicate the appropriate time to it, so. But I'm actually really excited. I think it'll be a great opportunity to expand my knowledge and, and hopefully give service to the community of Kauai through this opportunity.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Anyone else? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be voting on this at the next council meeting. And as I said, Mr. Ida could not make it today, so we will, um, need to catch up. I'll call a meeting back to order. Uh, next item, please.
Next item are, uh, items on the consent calendar for receipt, C2025-237, C2025-238.
Okay. Any discussion or public testimony?
On the interview? Yeah, did you want to speak on the interview? I did, actually.
Okay. With that.
But I still want to speak on the, I thought you were going to call testimony for that interview.
Yeah, well, we usually, we usually do, I, I didn't think anyone.
I, I actually.
All right. With that, I'll suspend the rules if we could take Mr.
Uh, she seemed, uh, Matt Bernabi for the record, and obviously, I'm not about to even dissect her. She seems like a lovely lady. I would have liked to have heard a little bit more bio regarding the job. That's fine. My bigger point regarding the ethics position is, in the political landscape that we are living right now, where do we stand on the compass of ethics? I mean, we see in national politics, we see at state level, we, we see our own Ron Coty do unethical things, and there's never been any teeth to any of these ethics. So I'm not about to go down any kind of argument lane. I'm just curious, wh-what does the job actually get done? I've never seen any results coming out of ethics. That's kind of my bigger point. Is it ceremonial? Because the interview sounded ceremonial. She sounded great. I mean, that was like a Tinder bio, not an ethics bio.
That is very unfair.
No, it is.
That is still.
It might be, it might be, but it's my right to say that. It's my right to say that.
Tinder.
I can say that.
Oh, you, you said a Tinder app?
Well, I'm just saying, that bio did not tell me about the job she's gonna do.
Well.
I learned about her kids and karate. I know she married, so it's, that's a bad choice to say.
Here it is.
But I'm trying to make the point that that bio had nothing really to do with this position to me.
Okay.
And I've never really seen anything come out of ethics. I mean, if you guys want to go down and get some things that ethics has actually done to make my tax dollar spent better, or whatever it may be, then you go do that, and you bring that back to me, and I'll read it, and I'll, and I'll eat, and I'll say, hey, look, I was wrong. But until that, I really don't know what ethics does. I don't think they have teeth. Thank you. Sorry if I hurt feelings. I didn't mean to.
After Noel, um, and Ellen came back towards my chair, I reached out my hand to Noel. For the record, Bruce Hart, and I told her I was very impressed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not, I'll call a meeting back to order. I, I will make a few comments because I think that is unfair to say. Board of Ethics is a county commission that has regular meetings that are posted on the agendas, that have minutes, that every single issue that they, uh, they look into is, is public. Now, the, the investigations in which they do are confidential. It's pers, typically personnel matters, but at the end of the day, if there is an ethics issue, an ethics complaint, or council members that need to determine whether or not there's a potential conflict in a, in an item on the agenda versus their employment outside of this council work, ethics does that reviews and investigations, and they do thorough investigations. I have been a subject of an ethics complaint. Several of us here have. They do their work, and I think to come up and say it's ceremonial. That is why we have a hard time finding commissioners, because of what occurred today. And I respect you, Mr. Bernabi. I respect you, and you, and you have your right to your opinion, but I think, what, you know, to call what we just saw. And the other thing, too, is we have the application, we have the information, and this is public record. Yep. So you can see her employment, her experience, reasons why she wants to, or he, whoever the applicant is. So the fact that you, you don't have it, that's not my problem.
Well, we're here to get the hearing, and we need to hear it. So that's my point.
Okay. So anyway, um, the Board of Ethics is a very important commission, one that we respect and, and, uh, and are subject to. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I hope that she'll not call Ellen and say, forget it, I don't want to do this no more, because we have had that. And we appreciate our nominees, we appreciate our volunteers, but, um, for anyone, you can go on the county website, and you can pull out the minutes from Ethics, uh, Commission meetings, you can pull out the agendas to see what's coming up, and you can attend and speak. So I'll leave it there. Um, again, with that, let's re, call a meeting back to order. We did have a motion to receive a consent calendar. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Next item is on page three, Communications, C2025-239, Communication from Macana Rivera, Assistant Chief of Police Support Services Bureau, requesting council approval of the indemnification provision contained in the Avalon Unity Software and User License Agreement, which governs the required update to the existing Avalon software system.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C2025-240, Communication from the County Engineer, requesting council approval of the indemnification provisions contained in the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation Permit Agreement, signed between the County of Kauai and the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation Highways Division, which will allow the wastewater management division to perform maintenance and inspections of sewer lines and manhole in the state.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
C2025-241, Communication from Council Chair Poso, requesting the presence of Tricia Allen, producer and community outreach specialist, Hoike Kauai Media, to provide a briefing on the Into Light project.
Move to receive.
Second.
Thank you. With that, I'll suspend the rules. If we can ho, have Tricia come up, and I'll just say that, um, you know, Hoike has been an amazing partner of this, of our county and of our county council, and, uh, she shared with me this program, and I, and I believe it's a, it's a program that is of interest for everyone in our community, so I asked her to come up and do a presentation. So thank you very much, Tricia, for being here today. Uh, if you could just state your name for the record, and, and you can proceed.
Sure. Thank you, Council Chair, council members, everybody here. Um, I appreciate your time. My name's Tricia Allen. I'm a producer and the community outreach specialist for Hoike Kauai Community Media, and we've been working with a national nonprofit who is having an exhibit here, um, in the state of Hawaii, but also specifically on Kauai for the next six months. It's, I'm sorry, it'll be for six months. It begins February 26th, February 2026. Um, I, we have a video that we produced that gives all of the details about the project, um, and it features the founder of the Into Light project. Her name is Teresa Clower, and it gives info about the project as a whole, um, what it would look like for the Kauai community, and, uh, how it was founded. So, um, if we could play that, I think.
The Into Light Project is changing the conversation about drug addiction through the power of art and story. In February 2026, the exhibition comes to Hawaii, honoring lives lost with original portraits and personal narratives. Each story submitted by their loved ones becomes a beacon, sparking connection, inspiring change, and bringing light to a shared struggle. Teresa Clower, you are the founder of the Into Light Project. For those people who have never heard about the project before, can you just kind of go over what it is that you folks do and how you started this?
Yeah, sure. Well, thank you for having me, Tricia. Um, the Into Light Project, the whole purpose of this organization is to end the stigma and change the conversation around drug addiction. Um, and we do that through the power of beautiful, original artwork, graphite portraits, and storytelling. The project began in 2019, just after my son Devon died from an accidental overdose. And Dev was a beloved son, brother, uncle, grandson, full of life, 32, I, I may have mentioned that. And, um, yeah, so he didn't anticipate dying. He was all kinds of wonderful things, and he had a drug addiction. So as a way of processing that grief as a mom, I took to drawing his portrait, which was pretty cathartic for me. It opened a floodgate. It opened up the opportunity for me to express that grief, but also to share that newfound passion for portrait work with others who have lost loved ones like we have. And so the idea is that in every single state in the country, 40 more people will be drawn. Uh, it's graphite pencil work. Um, these portraits are, um, beautiful renditions of the people who've died, and then we write a nice narrative of each of these individuals. And those public exhibitions are open for anyone to come see, and we encourage open conversation so that people understand that people like my son were normal human beings. They, he was not, you know, the scum of the earth. He was not, as people like to say, addicts and all kinds of judgy things. Devon suffered, and it's a disease. So we really try with this project to talk about the idea that this is not a moral failing, it's, it's a disease. So Kauai happens to be, uh, the location for our Hawaii show, and the community college there in Kauai, and their Performing Arts Center, have graciously agreed to hosting the exhibit for anyone who lives in the state of Hawaii. So it's open to anyone outside of Kauai, of course. The submission process is simple. We're doing 30 portraits from people throughout Hawaii. We have 28 more that we can take. So we have, we have some room, and the exhibition is opening on February 1st, and I believe that our opening reception will be February 22nd there, and it will stay up for six months. So anyone that is interested can go on our website, which is into lightproject.org, O-R-G. And on there, there's a submission page, Share Your Story, it's called. And it will say Hawaii, and they click on Hawaii, and it'll, it'll be a, um, a series of questions that are filled out. The more detailed people can give us, the better this story will be. And then at the bottom of the narrative, we'll ask for three photographs, and you pick the ones that you love of this, you know, of your loved one. The artist then is given those photographs, and the writer is given the answers to your narrative questions. And they will create the portrait and create the story, and then they will share it with you. Once you're happy with that narrative and the portrait, that's when we call it final. If, if you're not happy, we keep working on it until you are. Um, so by the end of this, each family will have a beautiful, um, framed portrait, as well as the, the story to accompany their loved one. So that's how it works, and, um, it's really, um, very meaningful from a family's point of view. Yes, it opens up emotion, but at the same time, by submitting and by being part of this project, family members are then helping us to open up the conversation and to end stigma and to humanize everyone who suffers from this disease. And we're also talking about stigma to families. And, you know, when you lo, when you lose someone to drug addiction, you're not getting a casserole at your front door. You know, it just doesn't work like that. People tend not to talk about it, or they're, they're pretty, I even had some judgment, you know, toward parenting and that sort of thing. I think there's this misunderstanding that this is a huge organization. No, it's not. It's, it's run by mothers like me who've lost a loved one. It's very small, very passionate, uh, and very respectful, because we've all been there. We know what it feels like. The exhibit, when it's up, it's really beautiful. It's not a downer. People say, how could you be so kind of morose? It's not. It's, it's celebrating people and for the whole person, not just their darkest moments, right?
Complete details and registration information about the Into Light Project Hawaii can be found at intolightproject.org. Submissions for the exhibition are open to all Hawaii residents from now until the end
Well, thank you. I'm not sure how Hawa, Kauai or Kauai got selected, but we appreciate that. Um, that's pretty, uh, pretty moving. Anyway, uh.
Yeah.
So how, how does Hoike, how is Hoike getting involved in all of this?
Um, we are partnering with the Into Light Project, and we're helping with media exposure to bring attention to the project, uh, and hopefully convince more of the community to submit their loved one's stories. As of right now, out of 30, only two stories have been submitted. So, um, I can only guess as to why, um, but the exhibit is at risk for not being able to happen at all, because if they don't have enough submissions, um, they won't be able to have the exhibit to begin with. And that's where I'm hoping, being here and speaking with all of you, um, can sort of help amplify that call. I recently did an interview with one of the participants who did submit, um, her loved one's testimony, and that is airing currently on our YouTube channel and Channel 54, and it's done in the hopes that it will encourage others who've gone through something similar to do the same, and know that they're not alone, and know that there shouldn't be shame associated with what happened with their loved one or their family, and that, uh, substance abuse disorder is a disease, and like Teresa said, not a moral failing, so.
Well, we hope we can help fill the 28 additional slots. Uh, I, I, I know for a fact that, um, I, I don't know 28 offhand, but I know if we put some thought in it, it wouldn't be difficult to, to find 28 families that would want to participate. So is there any questions, um, Ms. Cowden?
Yeah. That video that we just watched? That video that we just watched? Yes. Um, where do we find that video? So if we want to share it out? Because I think that would be an excellent way. So where, where do they find that video?
You can find that video on our YouTube channel.
So it would be Hoike Television? What's your YouTube channel?
Uh, Hoike KC TV, I believe.
Hoike K-C-T-V. What does C stand for? Co, community or?
Uh, it, it's Kauai Community Television.
Vision.
Yeah.
TV, that's YouTube. And then what's the name of it? Because, so if people are watching this besides just me, if they want to send it out to, you know, people?
Sure.
So what's the name of that video?
It's under our Community Connections playlist.
But do you know the name of the video?
Uh, it's Community Connections Into Light Project.
Community, so if somebody searched Community Connections?
It's called Honoring Lives Through Arts.
Oh.
Honoring Lives.
And Story.
Honoring Lives Through Art and Story. So I just want to make it easy for people to, um, they might be watching this, and, um, if people want to play it on a radio show or something like that as a random example.
Absolutely.
Um, they can, they can look that up and do that, to help promote this.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to use for the next few weeks on your YouTube channel, you can, you can put up a, um, feature video? So when you go to the, you know, there's that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you would like to, if you can put this one on, on the feature video, so when they go to your YouTube channel page, it'll be the video that's pinned.
Yeah, 100%. We can.
We can direct people there.
Um, as far as submissions, do you guys help them with the write-off, or they, they do like, uh, you know, and they do the submissions and then, um, as far as the portrait, does someone do the portrait, or?
Yeah.
I thought the portraits are really cool, too.
There's professional artists who help with the portraits, um, one of whom is actually on island, so they've reached out to local artists on Kauai to help with this project, and I think Carol Meckling is the artist that they were able to connect with. Um, professional artists do the portraiture, and professional writers help with the essay. So when you go to the website to submit, um, your loved one's story, it actually gives you a form to fill out that sort of gives you prompts, asking specific questions about, um, the person that you would like the story to be about, and at that point, the writer reaches out to the participant to go over more specific things, and that's when the process goes back and forth until, um, the person who's submitting the story is happy with the end result. So they do get assistance. They don't have to write it all on their own.
All perfect. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Hoike? If not, thank you again.
My pleasure. Thank you.
If any, anyone has any questions, you know, you can reach out to Hoike. Uh, what's your phone number at Hoike?
Yeah. Um, can I give you my email? We do have a phone number, but, um.
Yeah, whatever works. We just want to make it convenient for the, the public to call, because I.
Sure. Um, so my email is tallen@hoike.org.
A-L-L-E-N.
And then our phone number is 808, I always forget the first, 246-1556.
Tallen, T-A-L-L-E-N@hoike.org, email and phone number 808-246-1556. Folks, if you know anyone, um, please, some call. We would not, we would hate to see this project get canceled because we don't have enough, because we know we have more than the number of families on the island that, that's suffering right now. Um, uh, Ms. Holland. Um, Ms. Holland?
Thank you for this reminder. This has been on my list of things to do for three weeks. So, I'm finishing my questions.
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. Cavalio?
Yeah, I just, uh, appreciate the connection with Kauai Community College. Connected with them, yeah?
Yes.
So, I think that's a good area of help, if you will, to have this great opportunity.
It is. Yeah, it's perfect for this.
Awesome. All right, go ahead, Ms. Colleen.
Just, um, sorry that it's very clear to everyone out there. This is more of a memorial thing. So, it's people who didn't survive the?
Correct. It's aimed towards people who've, um, overdosed accidentally or otherwise from, you know, as a result of substance abuse disorder. Yes.
Thank you.
But it's a celebration?
Yeah, more importantly, celebration of their loss.
Of the lives of these individuals that were unfortunately lost, so.
Correct.
Looking forward to the display. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify? Mr. Hart?
For the record, Bruce Hart.
Well, first, I'd like to thank Hoike in general. I mean, what with this council, what with this community, what a service they provide and have for years. So, I think this is a beautiful project. I am rarely this moved. It's a beautiful testimony. And I want to thank everybody who is participating. And I want to say to the community, this is an opportunity to honor your lost loved one. There's no shame. Reach out, be a part of this project, and celebrate the life of your lost one. Drug addiction is horrible. You've heard me speak on it before. And it's something we all must stop hiding. We all have to work together to conquer it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Ms. Cauden?
I just, I just want to just put it out there, uh, that I think it is such a beautiful thing because I have known a number of people who have passed away, and sometimes almost by choice, or by choice. But I, what I really like in what you're doing is this isn't the person's whole story, that there is so much beautiful in a lot of these people. And some of our best artists and all of that, you know, they call it the tortured artist, but that they, part of what is that dynamic that has somebody really profoundly expressive also is very painful to be that vibrant in how much you feel your emotions. And so, um, I think this is very good, that, you know, we just can really honor everybody. So, I just want to say, it touches me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Colleen?
Yeah, I too want to say a special gratitude, Mahalo Nui Loa. It's such a beautiful thing that you all are doing. And the video, the, this made it really, really clear. I thought it was really important, the way, um, she talked about, you know, getting past the stigma and, and, um, but it's not a moral failing, it's a disease. I mean, I think that's the most important thing people have to understand. And I believe most of our, our people do, because most of us have been in fact, affected in one way or another. And then finally, the whole thing about celebrating people, the whole person. Thank you so much. However we can help. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else? No, I'll just say, thank you, Tricia, and thank you, Hoike. Uh, that was an amazing video, well-done video. And so, I'm going to put a plug in there. If anyone out there that wants to learn how to produce your own videos and shoot your own videos and learn how to use all the equipment, you can do it at Hoike. They, they offer amazing classes. They got great instructors. So, if any of you want to produce something like we just saw, uh, check out Hoike, two four six, one five five six. Thank you. With that, the motion is to receive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Chair, next item, our claims, C two zero two five dash two four two, communication from the county clerk. Transferring a claim filed against the county of Kauai by MLNI Court for property damage pursuant to section twenty-three point zero six charter of the county of Kauai. Page four, C two zero two five dash two four three, communication from the county clerk. Transferring a claim filed against the county of Kauai by National Subrogation Services on behalf of North River Insurance, Daniel Deng, for vehicle damage pursuant to section twenty-three point zero six charter of the county of Kauai. And C two zero two five dash two four four, communication from the county clerk. Transferring a claim filed against the county of Kauai by Brian Arzagon for loss of travel expenses and emotional distress pursuant to section twenty-three point zero six charter of the county of Kauai.
And to refer to the county attorney for disposition and report back as necessary. Second?
Thank you. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, please.
Resolution, resolution number two zero two five dash thirty-nine. Resolution confirming council appointment to the Kauai Historic Preservation Review Commission for Juliet Souza at Large.
Move to approve.
Aye.
Moving second. Any discussion or public testimony? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalio?
Aye.
Councilmember Cauden?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro?
Aye.
Councilmember Koalii?
Aye.
Council Chair Puzo?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Resolution number two zero two five dash forty. Resolution approving proposals for the inclusion in the twenty-twenty-six Kauai State Association of Counties Legislative Package. We have one registered speaker.
Move to approve. Thank you. With that, I'll suspend the rules. Can we get the first speaker up?
First speaker is Matt Bernabe.
Matt Bernabe, for the record, and this is actually why I came in today. So, within this package, I'm just going to address two, um, bills that I want to, uh, talk about. The first one is the cesspool one. I just want to know what the language is. I, I kind of talked off the record outside a little bit, and I kind of got around it. I would like to know where I could read up on that. Um, the second would be right below it, relating to the DOE recreational facilities. Now, that's pretty broad, and I don't know what that even entails. And I don't know, obviously don't know what's even in the words. However, I would like to emphasize that Kauai is now brought home several football championships, and yet not one school has a stadium. Roosevelt High School gets stadium. Kaiser High School gets stadium. Kauai, we let them use our stadiums for free, even if we bump out somebody else. They don't even want to help us repair our infrastructure. This, as a whole, seven of you and administration need to go hammer the state that we deserve, now that we've got several D-two championships and a D-one championship, that we need a stadium, at least one, or at least pick up the cost for the ones we already have. More than fifty percent. Should be a hundred. Okay? This is why I came here. This is the, the cesspool one, I didn't know where that was going. I kind of got diffused on that. I just like read up on them. This, my daughter fought. When she brought home titles in wrestling for Kapaa, we got brand-new mats. These arrived with uniforms because she win. That's how the state DOE works. You bring titles home, you get money. We've got several titles. Press them for the money. Press them for the money. Our kids deserve it. I don't even have kids anymore. I have an empty nest there. I still fighting for them, damn it. Oh, sorry, sorry. I didn't mean that last word. Strict the last word from the record. Sorry.
You got to lower the volume when you come up.
Oh, yes, it's still there. You're in again. Thanks.
That is my personal, that is, that is my personal copies, all right? That is my personal copies. That's?
Oh, it is?
Yes.
I'll give them back. I won't read them. I'll bring them back.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify? If not, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion?
I, I was just guessing, are we going to? I, I was able to hear what these are in the, um, Kauai State Association of Counties meetings that I'm attending. Um, did, did any of us want to just discuss or mention any of them? Usually I make us go through them all and add, seriate them, but there's so many.
Yeah, there's, there's fifteen of them.
There's, there's so many. I mean, I, I, um?
Or actually fourteen-plus priorities, so there, there's quite a bit. I did want to comment on, on Matt's testimony, because I agree that I think the state should be doing a little bit more, uh, in the way of our football, soccer, baseball, because our, our fields are county fields. And, uh, the state, the whole state sports tournaments are, um, are, uh, they need our fields. And to their credit, they did the improvements to Vidina Stadium and, and Hanapi Stadium. They are paying half. They are funding half of that. I, I, but again, I agree with Matt. I think it should be more. Because if not for our county facilities, the state would have to ship our kids to Oahu to play in the state stadium. So, that's not practical. So, I think the state could do more as far, as it relates to, to that. Uh, this, this H-SAC package bill is, does not, it, it basically says they should, to open up in, uh, more of the state's facilities for the county use, but. Was there any specific ones that you wanted to cover?
Well, I, I just, you know, like, when I'm looking at, I just felt like some of them are worth mentioning to the public, like one relating to general excise tax. That's where the county is basically using that tax for our roads. And so, it has a sundown. And so, it's, you know, to move this sundown up to, um, I got to look again, like twenty forty-five, which I think it, it has turned out to work out really well to be able to repair our roads. So, I think that's, that's valuable. That's coming from the city and county of Honolulu. Um, excuse me, Hawaii. That's coming from Hawaii. And then the conveyance tax to help with, um, keeping people from being pushed so much to, um, homelessness. Conveyance pa, tax is, you know, when, when properties are sold. Now, this is mostly putting a whole lot of that intention on the very expensive properties. And I like that it is stair-stepping it, you know, more of a tax when it's higher. I think for me, where I would really, but it's, it's good, you know, I'm fine with this. But I think when we have the flips, you know, when there's, when there's a big, uh, amount that has come up, you know, when somebody sells it and they make two, three million or something in a short period of time, if they haven't owned it long. We saw a lot of that in the last five years. That was something I have asked for in the past, is I have asked for conveyance tax. And that's to discourage speculative build, I mean, buys, or like when people are able to buy and take advantage of a, a really big gain, that they have it. It's hard to get anything that we send to the, the state legislature to pass. That's what I've noticed in my seven years. So, I didn't make a real effort to change what these guys want. But I think it is important for the public to know that there is continuing to be an effort to find funding for those people who are, as I say, lose in the economic game of musical chairs that's there for our housing, you know, as we've had all this inflation. So, I thought that one, uh, was important.
Let me do this, because we, 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 you know, we have a very light agenda today, and we have time. And Mr. Cavalio is our H-SAC representative, so he represents us at our State Association of Counties meetings. I could, I could read right through these. Uh, and, and, because I think Ms. Cauden is, is correct in the sense that there are some issues that the, our State Association of Counties would be lobbying for that may be of specific interest to certain members of the community. I think this is, I'll be honest, I think this is too many items for one package, because the state's going to get confused, and legislature, uh, is not really, um, open. But I think every island has an opportunity to produce or provide legislative impacts or issues that they want to be lobbied. And all of these have to be approved by all four counties for it to go on the package. So, if you want to read, or I can read it, Mr. Cavalio? Okay, I'll read it. Uh, we're just going to go real, real quick, and this is just a very broad description. Uh, and if anything catches your ear, uh, you can reach out to our office for further information and how? Because it's going to come down to lobbying our state legislature. And it helps when we have people from the community that are, uh, calling or emailing, uh, our legislators, our Kauai delegation, and letting them know that they support or not support. So, real quick, number one, relating to emergency medical services and opioid use disorder treatment, establishes a pilot program authorizing paramedics under Department of Health. Approved protocols to administer buprenorphine, uh, following, basically Narcan in cases of opioid overdose. Requires the department to verify treatment centers capable of same- or next-day follow-up care, provide training, implement a phased rollout, and submit a report evaluating the program outcomes. Uh, that one was introduced actually by the, the State Association. The second one is relating to housing. Repeals the sunset provision related to the county's authorization to develop, construct, finance, refinance, or otherwise provide mixed-use developments. Uh, number three, relating to cesspools. I think this is very, very important for everyone that has a cesspool. Provides temporary income tax credit for the cost of upgrading or converting a cesspool to a septic system or an aerobic treatment unit system or connecting to a sewer system. Permits DOH, the Department of Health, as a pilot program to certify no more than two residential large-capacity cesspools.
Can, can I say something on that really quick? That reminds me of what we did in the past with, um, giving a tax credit for solar, just in case people didn't hear it. I like this, that there could be an income tax credit when people put in their se, um, septic systems, because it is so profoundly expensive. And if they can take that credit and stretch it out, now, that would obviously only be for state taxes. But it still does make a big difference. It's a way to slowly get your money back. So, even if you are having to borrow some of that money, you know, there, there's a way to help it happen. So, I was supportive of this.
All righty, relating, uh, number four, relating to DOE recreational facilities. Requesting the Department of Education to make available recreational facilities to the public during non-peak hours and non-school days. Pursuant to chapter thirty-nine Hawaii Administrative Rules, Hawaii's public school facilities are required to be available for public use as long as the requested activities do not interfere with normal school operations. And just for your information, uh, we, we get charged by the state to utilize their facilities. Even the nonprofit youth, like nonprofit youth leagues, like, uh, Pop Warner just had their cheer competition using the, the Kauai High, or Wyman High School gym. We get charged for that. And, uh, they don't get charged for use of our county facilities. Relating to psycho, psychology and?
I want to say a point.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say a point on that, too, um, and the importance of, um, just making it available to the community, not only for big organizations like, you know, Pop Warner or whatever, that are super organized, but even small, there maybe not even be nonprofits. There's a group of people that organize, you know, volleyball nights, say, every Thursday night or whatever. We have this beautiful new Kauai High School gym, and I don't know that it's actually available to people to use. So, what's the point of spending all that money and then letting it sit empty a lot, you know? That's happening. We can't, we shouldn't have that.
Okay, uh, so, all of the, the first four was, um, was, was proposed by the State Association itself. Uh, number five is from Maui. Supports, uh, they, to include a proposed state bill in a, in a H-SAC package. To establish a psychology inter-jurisdictional compact in Kauai law, the resolution endorses creating a legal framework that allows licensed psychologists from participating states to practice telepsychology, basically remote, remote medicine, and provide temporary in-person services across state lines. By supporting this compact, Maui County aims to expand access to mental health care. Self-explanatory. I think it's a good idea. Um, next, related, relating to tobacco products. This is from City and County of Honolulu. Repeal existing law that provides that all local ordinance or regulations on the sale of cigarettes, tobacco products, and electronic smoking devices are preempted, and that existing local laws and regulations conflicting with the state law on smoking are null and void. This just wants to remove the preemption so that the counties can enforce their own or, uh, pass and enforce their own laws on tobacco. Number seven, housing. Repeals amendments to section two oh one H thirty-eight. Just real briefly, section two oh one H thirty-eight. In the last legislative session, I believe, uh, from our House Rep. Luke Ebslin, removed some of the authorities that the county councils had on zoning changes. Uh, and this will simply repeal that to give the counties back the local control over, uh, zoning, zoning laws. And that is being introduced by City and County of Honolulu. Uh, number eight, establishing exemption from mediation and paternity proceedings where there are allegations of domestic abuse. Clarifies exemption for mediation in divorce proceedings as it relates to domestic abuse. And this one is simp, right now, in paternity proceedings, um, mediation is not exempted, and this would create an exemption. Basically treating paternity cases same as domestic violence cases.
I, I would like to just, um, I just want to acknowledge, I mean, most, most of the- I, I would like to just, um, I just want to acknowledge, I mean, most, most of the, the domestic violence is men against women, but once in a while, it is women against men, whether that is physical or whatever else. So it's a little uncomfortable that this, when it only says paternity, you know, instead of, um, custody, right? In, in, um... Yeah, I was just a, you know, just felt sometimes the abuse goes the other way. I, the minority, but hopefully it'll all be fine.
And by the way, there's a typo. It says exemption from medication in divorce proceedings, so I'm not sure that's...
It says mediation.
Yeah, I know, it's saying panic medication. Uh, number nine, relating to firearms. Appropriates funds to the Department of Law Enforcement for the establishment and implementation of a state gun buy, uh, gun buyback program. Very successful on Oahu, uh, and we are asking that the state fund that projects across the state. Uh, number ten, appropriate funds to the judiciary for the enforcement of gun violence protection, protective orders. Appropriates funds to the Department of Law Enforcement to conduct public awareness campaigns on gun violence, uh, protective orders. Um, number eleven, relating to water pollution. Appropriates funds to the Department of Health to further capitalize the Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for purposes of providing additional low-interest loans for eligible, uh, proj- projects. These are no-brainers, really. I mean, most of these are no-brainers that, you know, you, you, you wouldn't think that the counties would have to be asking.
Yeah.
Uh, general excise tax, as Ms. Cowden brought up earlier, uh, this would, uh, keep our general excise tax going. Uh, there is a sunset, uh, and that needs to be changed so that we can participate in that program. Uh, number thirteen, established, uh, the Homeless Services Special Fund. Allows counties to apply for matching funds from the Affordable Home Ownership Revolving Fund for certain housing projects. Increases the conveyance tax rate for certain properties. Establishes conveyance tax rate for certain, uh, and multifamily residential properties, and establishes new exemptions to the convey, the conveyance tax. This bill allocates collected conveyance taxes to the Affordable Home Ownership Revolving Fund, Homeless Service Fund, and Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund, and amends allocations to the Land Conservation Fund. Basically, they want to be able to increase conveyance taxes and allow that monies to fund many of our homeless and affordable projects. And number fourteen, the bill requires Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation, HHFDC, to consider the proximity between the housing location and the applicant's place of employment, whether the applicant is a state or county employee, or whether the applicant is a returning resident within the past two years. This bill will require for any project developed or administered by HHFDC to set aside a percentage of those available units for state or county employees when feasible. So those are the, those are the bills. Uh, we will be tracking those bills as we get through the session, but, um, we, we will see. Any other discussion, Mr. Cavalio?
Just wanted to mention, again, overall, the discussion we've had back and forth, you know, with all the counties. And then for Kauai County, the, the ones that resonated, and I talked, we talked about it, was the ones you talked about, Chair. The mixed-use, the housing, the cesspools, and the recreational facilities. Those kind of like resonated. But overall, I think the discussion we've had statewide and amongst ourselves and with the fellow councilmembers, um, is what we have before us. So just wanted to mention that, Chair.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your work on H-SAC and helping to move these through. Hopefully we'll get twenty percent of these bills pass up the legislature. With your help, we might be able to pump that up. Any other discussion? Mr. Kanashiro?
Yeah, I'll just say, um, I think it's a lot of bills. I don't know, um, you know, when we prioritize them, I think if we had a smaller amount prioritized, you know, like, three, um, we might have a better chance of, um, getting a lot of traction. For me, looking at these, I think the general excise tax is like the biggest priority for us. I know, uh, there's a population, um, limit on it. I'm thinking they're probably trying to leave out Oahu as well. But, um, for Kauai County, the general excise tax is huge. Um, I don't expect them to, um, extend it anytime we, anytime until like we get really close to the deadline. Then everyone will be biting their nails on whether they're going to extend it or not. So I would love for them to, uh, do the extension now and, um, have everybody start doing, planning on, you know, expecting that income. But if we don't get that extension, um, this past budget, our general excise tax is bringing in thirty-six million plus another two million in investments. So we'd be starting our budget with thirty-eight million dollars in the hole, which is over ten, over ten percent in the hole. Um, so that general excise tax has proven to be, um, a very important part of our financials and, um, keeping our, our finances secure. So, um, if I had to prioritize all of those, those would be my number one priority. That would be my number one priority.
Anything else?
But, uh, being that we have to vote on the whole package, I'm voting on the whole package, in favor of the whole package. I realize there's a lot of different interests from different counties on what they want, and, um, I'm not going to go through and say I like this one or I don't like that one. Because at the end of the day, um, if we reject any of these proposals, it's going to have to reroute through all the counties again for approval. So, I mean, I think with our packages, we voted up or we voted down. I'll be voting for it.
Yeah, there are no bad bills in there. I, I think this is a strategy, um, you know, we've found over the years with H-SAC that the more bills you put in, the less attention it gets. We'll see new legislature, new, new lobbying people. Uh, you know, I want to touch on again what Mr. Kanashiro talked about. It's kind of like the government shutdown. You know how, you know it's going to stop. You know it's going to end at some point, right? And then it finally gets to that point where people decide, okay, let's, let's, let's pass it. Uh, this GE tax is, is scheduled to end in twenty thirty, in twenty thirty, which is five years from now. And we know that they're going to have to approve it, or, or the counties will, will, will perish. I will say that. Tax, property tax rates would have to increase significantly to cover the loss in revenue from GE tax. So my question to the legislature, and I don't know if they watch this show or not, but why don't you just remove the sunset date from the GE tax search charts? Why we got to have a sunset date so you can hold the counties hostage until the sunset date and, and, and use it as a, as a tool? Just remove it. We know that general excise tax funds are required by every single county to help fund our road projects and transportation projects. So wh- why do we even have, so this one just goes to twenty forty-five? Why? And then, you know, then twenty thirty-five and twenty forty, we're saying it's not us, but someone will be at this table saying, hey, we got to ask for another extension. Just remove those sunset. And then if the legislature feels they don't want to do it no more, then they can repeal the statute. But to keep this hanging over county's head, then it, it doesn't work well for bonding opportunities when, when counties got to go out to look for financing and they're looking at your long-term revenue generation. This is, this is part of it. And every year you get closer to the deadline of the sunset date, your score goes down because that source of revenue could end. So my thing to the state is remove it and let's move forward. But yes, I'm not going to vote against the package because of that. Uh, I just believe that's where we should be heading, because that is, that's just like leverage that the state has over the counties. Uh, any other discussion? Did you want to speak, Mr. Hart? With that, I'll suspend the rules.
Well, Director Bruce Hart, uh, just in light of what Chair said, hope that our representatives are listening. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll call a meeting back to order. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Roll call.
Councilmember Bolosan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalio.
Aye.
Councilmember Cowden.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Kanashiro.
Aye.
Councilmember Kuoli'i.
Aye.
Councilchair Puzo.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
With that, there is no further business. With no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.